Councilmember Jensen?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Here.
Thank you. There we go. Happy St. Patrick's Day. We're here today for two workshop items. First one is on the 2020 Zero Waste Plan. We have a report by Colleen Foster, Environmental Officer, and Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director. That was without my glasses, so terrible.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, and happy the afternoon to you on this Happy St. Patrick's Day. Colleen Foster, our Environmental Officer, and myself will be discussing the 2020 Zero Waste Plan. Today's workshop consists of the following topics here. I'll be going over a review of the current Zero Waste Plan, which was adopted in 2012. I'll turn the presentation over to Colleen to talk about the regulatory drivers mainly pertaining to organics and how they relate to the Zero Waste Plan. She'll also talk about the plan elements in the proposed Zero Waste Plan. She'll turn the presentation back over to me to talk about the fiscal impact as well as recommendations. And jumping right in. At the time of the first Zero Waste Resolution in 2012, at the time, Councilmember, or Mayor Sanchez, you were a council member and had brought this item forward to adopt a resolution supporting the city's goals to divert waste from landfill. Following adoption of that resolution, staff worked with a consultant to prepare the city's first Zero Waste Plan, which was then adopted by the City Council in 2012. It established the goal to reach 75% to 90% landfill diversion by 2020 and also set a roadmap for the department to follow on actions that were required in order to meet this ambitious goal. At the time this was adopted, we were one of the first in the state that was leading the way on zero waste. Within the current plan, there are quite a few programs that were intended to be implemented. They're shown here. I'm just going to highlight a few of them. The first being the single-stream recycling, which came about in, I believe, 2011. This transitioned our antiquated crate system where we were separating paper in one crate, bottles and cans in another, and automated this into an automated system. This single action increased the diversion over the past decade by 17%, allowing us to move towards that 75% to 90% diversion rate. The plan also includes quite a bit of education and partnership within the community. We have a high community presence through the Green Oceanside Program, mainly pursuing public education with regulatory compliance to ensure protection and conservation of natural resources. The other program I wanted to highlight is the Zero Waste Schools partnership with Oceanside Unified School District. This has been fully implemented now in all of the schools. It is following an eight-step plan to increase diversion from landfill, and it incorporates zero-waste objectives in both operations as well as the curriculum and also saved the school district $80,000. So that was a great benefit. Colleen will be focusing a majority of her presentation on organics actions, but I did want to mention that the current plan also contains elements that we've been implementing that also get organics out of the landfill. Some of the ones I'd like to note are that we had commissioned an organics feasibility and waste characterization study in 2018. The study told us or found that food, as well as other organics, such as compostable paper and yard trimmings, made up a majority of the portion of the waste stream that goes to landfill, and that's followed next by plastics. The study determined that we needed a robust food waste prevention and recovery program, especially as we try to meet the new mandates ahead of us. Another program I wanted to highlight is the Green Oceanside Kitchen, which was opened in 2019. This is a partnership between the city as well as a private operator. And this kitchen accepts rescued food and agricultural surplus, as well as has a specialty kitchen to promote value-added processing. This has enabled us to divert a significant amount of food for meals instead of these going to landfill. And during COVID, this has amounted to over 434,000 pounds of food going through the kitchen instead of to landfill. And lastly, I want to note our commercial organics program, which launched in 2020. We had a little bit of stop and start with COVID, but it is being implemented now. We have over 1,000 businesses participating, and over 70% of those are realizing cost savings based on rightsizing of their services. The Zero Waste Plan also emphasizes public outreach. We have strong ties within the community with a number of organizations, including working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, Visit Oceanside. We do a lot of promotion through the O-Sider. We do a lot of workshops with the community and the school districts, and currently, those are being held virtually. And as I mentioned, the Zero Waste Schools program is another area of focus. And we also work with the Girl Scout troops. So this is a slide that shows our diversion rates over time, starting in 2011. And I want to highlight some of the major events that have impacted our diversion rates, including in 2012, we did see a jump in diversion after we had implemented the automated residential recycling services that I had mentioned. And in 2014, we also saw an increase due to implementation of state law for mandatory commercial recycling. In 2020, which is on the right of the slide, we did implement commercial organics this year. And as we move into the future, when we add residential organics collection, we are hoping that this brings us to over 80% landfill diversion. In comparison to other agencies in the region, particularly the North County Agencies as well as the City of San Diego, shown here, we measure success in diversion by a per capita disposal rate. Oceanside's goal is to be at 6.3 pounds per person per day. We are well below that goal, almost 2 pounds less than the goal at 4.2 pounds per day currently. The state's regulatory agency, CalRecycle, has been tracking this diversion rate. And although we've had successes and also have been doing that while maintaining some of the lowest rates in the region. Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen for the next portion of the presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Sanchez and Council. My name's Colleen Foster. I'm the Water Utilities Environmental Officer. I've had the fortunate opportunity to be with the City of Oceanside throughout this zero-waste journey. And I'm glad to be here today to present the 2020 Zero Waste Plan and also go over the primary regulatory drivers leading us towards implementation of the 2020 Zero Waste Plan. As Carrie mentioned throughout her slides, regulation has been a primary driver. Yes, Oceanside has done a phenomenal job in implementing sustainable practices and zero waste. But in reality, we've done it in lockstep with the regulation. In 2012, AB 341 mandated commercial recycling. We implemented commercial recycling in 2014 to be compliant. In 2016, the state mandated mandatory commercial organic. In 2020, we implemented commercial food scraps recycling to meet minimal compliance per state law. Today, the most significant regulation in my industry since 1989 with the advent of recycling is SB 1383, CalRecycle Short-lived Climate Pollutant Act. This mandate impacts every way in which we provide services, collection, monitor, enforcement, and education, and further requires organics and recycling services for all generators. Previous regulations had exemptions. Previous regulations only applied to certain type businesses or certain type residents. Current regulation, which is to go into effect in 2022 with SB 1383, requires organics and recycling services for all businesses, multifamily customers, industrial generators, as well as all residents. Today, we are in partial compliance. We have education outreach programs. We have a partial compliance for mandatory commercial recycling, but we still have much to do to just meet minimal compliance with the new state regulation. So why organics? The state of California passed SB 1383 in 2016 as a primary mechanism to meet its climate action goals set by AB 32, which was the framework for the Global Warming Solutions Act. SB 1383's objective is to reduce methane emissions generated from organics and landfills. It's considered one of the second-most potent climate emitter in California. So with that, and increasing and intensifying natural disasters as well as fires, the state has moved forward with full implementation of SB 1383. Additionally, SB 1383 is unique. It not only requires organics recycling and diversion, it also sets mandates on edible food. So for the first time, state law is regulating and requiring generators ensure edible food goes to people, not landfills. Fortunately, our city's action and development of the city's Green Oceanside Kitchen puts us in a position, a good position, to implement a robust food recovery program and puts us in a good position to achieve partial compliance as we go towards full compliance by 2024. SB 1383 sets aggressive statewide targets and timelines. SB 1383, the objective is to reduce organics by 50% by 2020 and 75% by 2025, and to also further recover 20% edible food by 2025. CalRecycle's progress report released in 2020 stated they have not met the 50% targets. As such, they are moving forward with full implementation with no changes on the rules for SB 1383. The two most important dates to our city and to our customers and generators are 2022 and 2024. By January 1 of 2022, jurisdictions are required to comply and are held accountable, meaning if we don't comply or seek action towards compliance, we will be liable for financial penalties, anywhere between $500 to $10,000 per day per violation. And then in 2024, jurisdictions are required to enforce collection services and to further monitor and inspect generators and to impose financial penalties for noncompliance against generators. Since 2016, with SB 1383 on the horizon, our staff has actively been engaged throughout the regulatory process and rulemaking process. I have attended almost every hearing and public meeting across the state of California throughout this process. I'm actually known to have submitted the most public comments across the state in regards to SB 1383. Fortunately, we had made some difference. We have changed certain components of the rule, but unfortunately, it wasn't enough to really move or change the state's intent to fully implement this prescriptive regulation, which does have a significant impact to our jurisdictions. So we've tried, and we continue to work closely with the state to engage them and to obviously develop ways in which we can achieve compliance, but also find flexibility to be successful on our own, which I think Oceanside has done a phenomenal job. The following slide is an overview of the initial requirements by January 1, 2022. We will not meet all of these requirements. What you'll see in our SB 1383 Action Plan, which is a part of the 2020 Zero Waste Plan, you'll see multiple new requirements that need to be implemented. Our plan is to achieve partial compliance and then to demonstrate full compliance or the goal towards full compliance by 2024. New requirements will include increased services and collection needs, as well as increased enforcement, monitoring, and outreach. So this brings us to the 2020 Zero Waste Plan. The reason I started with the regulation is the reality is the 2020 Zero Waste Plan, for the most part, is the SB 1383 Action Plan. This action plan will be used as a component of, will demonstrate our efforts towards compliance up until 2024. In 2012, when we were developing the 2012 Zero Waste Plan, we had the opportunity to be creative. We have the opportunity to develop innovative and creative programs. This plan is more about minimal compliance to state law while also being successful with diverting materials from landfill. So as a result, the 2020 Zero Waste Plan includes SB 1383 Action Plan. In response to stakeholder input, it also concludes a draft marine debris reduction ordinance as well as other minor enhancements to current zero-waste programming. This slide provides an overview on what components of the 2020 Zero Waste Plan is mandate versus policy. So mandate versus maybe optional. So obviously, SB 1383 plan is mandated, and that's the majority of the full plan. Food recovery used to be a policy thing. It's something we did because it was the right thing to do. It is now mandated per SB 1383. A standard producer responsibility, finding shared solutions towards the recyclability of products and packaging, is now mandated in the state of California. The policy elements within the Zero Waste Plan includes elimination of outdated elements from the 2012 Zero Waste Plan. We've identified things that we don't need to do and ways to do things even better. It also includes some minor waste reduction and repair, education, and outreach opportunities, and then includes the proposal to pass a marine debris reduction ordinance, which is seen as a great step towards mitigating single-use plastics in our marine environment. As mentioned before, we've worked hand-in-hand and close-step with stakeholders. For the 2020 Zero Waste Plan in particular, we held multiple Green Oceanside booths early in the year and prior to that. And then in COVID, we've held multiple virtual workshops. We've sent out direct mailers twice over the past year to residents. We've held stakeholder meetings directly with our local organizations. We've worked very closely with the Chamber and Main Street as well as the environmental organizations. And we've provided dozens of public presentations over the past year. And we've also provided two public surveys in which we received over 200 respondents, the majority of which supported passage of the plan as well as adoption of the marine debris ordinance. As mentioned previously, the Zero Waste Plan has requirements on collection and processing, the way we monitor and enforce services and programs. It will require 2,500 new inspections every year. It will require the inspections and route reviews of over 200 routes annually. All of these things are new requirements and new things that we will have to complete. And it has further requirements on how the city procures materials, requiring the procurement of recycled content and the use of compost and mold, and the documentation and reporting following all of those activities. By January 1 of 2022, it will be seen as partial compliance if the city adopts and implements several new ordinances affecting mandatory collection, generator outreach, food recovery, as well as adopting an enforcement schedule. It's going to also require additional requirements of edible food recovery. The kitchen aligns this very well for this, but it will require a significant amount of inspection work to work closely with food donors as well as food recovery agencies. And last but not least, it has very prescriptive components in regards to education and outreach in multiple languages as well as follow-up. As mentioned previously, the 2020 Zero Waste Plan, the other major component of it is the draft marine debris reduction ordinance. The goal of this ordinance is to reduce litter and address marine debris by targeting the materials that commonly end up as litter, single-use plastic materials and utensils in particular. This ordinance has been developed over a three-year period of stakeholder collaboration and public input as well as outreach. Through our city's Be Disposable Free Campaign, which we started in 2018, we quickly identified the primary products of concern in our local community of Oceanside and across the state of California. I don't think it's a surprise to see that it's polystyrene and single-use plastics. These materials are not recyclable locally and have significant challenges in the industry for recyclability and oftentimes end up as a primary pollutant in our coastal waterway. As such, we've worked with stakeholders to develop an ordinance that addresses these materials and prohibits the use of polystyrene food service ware and requires that reusable, compostable, or recyclable alternatives be used. With stakeholder input, city staff presented three options to our community, to our business community, to our schools, and just to our residents in general. The three options were obviously to take no action, to continue with our Green Oceanside outreach, to encourage greener alternatives, but to not mandate it. Option two was to adopt an ordinance immediately that would prohibit the use of polystyrene and further require accessories upon request only. Option three, which we've been able to get support across the table this past year, has been an approach that we developed in light of COVID-19. Option three is an ordinance that we've presented to you. It covers a three-year phased approach towards implementation. Year one is voluntary. Year one, we work with the business community to help them, you know, get out with the old and to help them implement more greener alternatives. Year two would be a prohibition on polystyrene food service ware. And year three would be a requirement to offer utensils upon request only. In option three, there are also major caveats in it that allows businesses to request delays or exemptions if related to COVID or economic hardship. So it provides that flexibility. And with that, I'll hand that over to Director Dale. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to pick up on fiscal impact. There is some good news in this. It is that we are currently receiving a fee from Waste Management in the amount of $750,000 per year, which was a change in the contract when commercial organics were added to the contract. The $750,000 fee offsets some of the program expenses that I'll be talking about on the following slides. This is a revenue in addition to other revenues, such as the contract trash rate and the city's services charge. So not only are program costs associated with the implementation of zero waste a cost component for the solid waste utility, but there are other program costs associated with the utility, including billing, risk management, general admin allocation, all these related to the solid waste activities. Now, today's action is going to be requesting that you adopt the 2020 Zero Waste Plan. But with that, we are not requesting any additional funding here today. There is no additional program request in the upcoming budget that you'll hear in the spring. There is, long-term though, however, a need to add some additional staff, up to four staff, and $815,000 of programs annually. Now, the $750,000 SB 1383 fee that we are receiving currently offsets $750,000 of that $815,000. So there's about a $65,000 gap plus the cost of the four additional FTEs. We have determined that a rate impact would be about 2% for two years, so a total of 4%. And on a utility bill, would be about 11 cents each of those years, so 22 cents total. So the cost of solid waste disposal and recycling, obviously, is going up with such mandates that are significant. And the League of California Cities commissioned a fiscal impact report last year, which determined that seven out of 10 cities would see a 1% to 20% rate increase. We do have an RFP that is out for our franchise agreement. And so telling you what that impact would be here in Oceanside, we just don't know what that will be, but we should know in the coming months. So with that, we are recommending that City Council adopt the 2020 Zero Waste Plan, which includes the SB 1383 Action Plan, as well as direct staff to return to City Council this summer to adopt the marine debris reduction ordinance. This was option three, with a three-year phased approach timeline for compliance. Colleen and I are both available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to add that staff also was able to complete maybe 35 outreach meetings regarding the single-use plastic bag in a very short period of time. How many meetings was that, Colleen?
It was 45 meetings in one month.
In one month. It was pretty fantastic. And I did have one question before I ask if there are requests to speak. When you said that our goal is for full compliance by 2024, is that January 1, 2024, or December 31, 2024?
Penalties can be imposed as of January 1, 2024, so it's December 31, 2023.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification. It's a whole-year lesson, I thought. Any requests by the public to speak on this item?
We have 11 requests to speak on this item. And our first speaker is Gretchen Gary, to be followed by Joe Howd, to be followed by Kevin Lee. We're getting Gretchen on the line?
Hi there. Hello. I have three minutes here till I have to get my kids from the gate of their school. So, good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am an Oceanside resident, a mom, and a volunteer who often cleans the beaches here in Oceanside. My favorite place to clean is the harbor, actually. I bring my children along to show them the impact of our actions and also to teach them about stewardship and community service. And I also try to get my friends and family to think differently about the choices they make, whether that's passing on plastic cutlery when offered or refusing plastic bags. And I'm here to ask the City Council to vote in favor of a marine debris ordinance to help our businesses think differently about the choices they make in how they deliver food and drink to our citizens. It's often just something people don't think about. And I think just with a little bit of encouragement, we can make a lot of progress. And I really do hope that the City Council looks to take a progressive act on this because we have a crisis on our hands in our local ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Joe Howd.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Joe Hood and a board member of the North County Climate Change Alliance. In 2020, 180 nations agreed to place strict limits on export of plastic waste. Sadly, the U.S. was not one of them. Our exports rose to Malaysia, Vietnam, Kenya, Indonesia, and elsewhere. 90% of plastic cannot be recycled. We and other rich nations are unfairly asking We and other rich nations are unfairly asking poor nations to deal with our plastic waste. This must stop. Here are some mind-numbing facts. Humans buy 1 million plastic bottles per minute. Half a million plastic straws are used in the world every day. Americans discard 500 billion Styrofoam cups every year. Most of these will still be present in landfills 500 years from now. Single-use plastics frequently do not make it to a landfill and are not recycled. Just look around our streets and sidewalks. Our oceans and beaches are overwhelmed with discarded plastic. By 2050, there will be as many pounds of plastic in the ocean as there are fish at the rate we're going. Fish are dying from plastic pollution. Oceanside, please do your part in reducing this tragic pollution. Please pass a severe Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Kevin Lee, to be followed by Ashmeen Mahal, to be followed by Arturo Vinales. And Mr. Lee, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Hi there and good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez and Oceanside City Council members. My name is Kevin Lee and I am the Environmental Impact and Compliance Specialist for Dr. Bronner's. And I will be speaking on behalf of the company, which is a fifth-generation, family-run, local business and California benefit corporation. Since the 1980s, Dr. Bronner's has proudly manufactured our top-selling organic and fair-trade soaps in North County San Diego. And today, we have over 300 employees, many who live in Oceanside, and we also distribute our products around the world. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and voice our support of the Oceanside and City Council taking action on marine debris, single-use plastics, and reducing plastic waste and pollution in our community. Dr. Bronner's is one of the largest consumer products manufacturing businesses in San Diego County, and we currently use massive quantities of plastic packaging to distribute our products to consumers around the world. At the same time, we know that there is a market for sustainability that many people support. Since our inception as a company, we have built sustainability into our business model, even before all the recent upticks in awareness around the plastics issue. For example, since 2003, we have sourced 100% post-consumer recycled PET plastics for most of our bottles. Using PCR, plastic encourages recycling because it builds an end-of-life market for recycled material, and PET is widely recyclable. In addition, we have set business goals to send zero waste to landfill, provide employee lunches in compostable paper or reusable containers, expand packaging options for our products that promote refill, develop more plastic-free packaging options for our products, and support the Plastics-Free California Ballot Initiative. We know that the right direction is to move away from single-use virgin plastics and to invest in zero-waste initiatives. As a local business, we would like to see policies and infrastructure investments that would go above and beyond to incentivize and support businesses moving away from single-use plastics, promote reuse options for packaging, and expand recycling and composting systems in Southern California and the U.S. The good news is that our community has the power and choice to make that move, and U.S. City Council have the authority to help regulate the rogue streams of pollution degrading our ecosystems here in Oceanside, North County, and the rest of San Diego. Dr. Bronner's certainly can't go at creating a cleaner world and cleaner North County alone. That's why today, we urge the City Council to consider adopting the 2020 Zero Waste Plan and by taking swift action on single-use plastics, such as phasing out polystyrene food service ware and having only single-use utensils be available by request. We commit to working with the Oceanside City Council, Mayor Sanchez, and the North County Business Community to support action however we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Ashmeen Mahal, to be followed by Arturo Vinales, to be followed by Karina Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. In seventh grade, I began working with fellow colleagues and environmentalists to support this Straws and Request campaign in hopes to promote moving forward with AB 1884. My name is Ashmeen Mahal, and I'm now an 11th grader at El Camino, about to become a senior. I've been working with the City Hall and what began as the Straws and Request campaign for almost four to five years. During that time period, I was able to advocate for and learn about the impacts of plastic and styrofoam use to our environment here in Oceanside. One thing the Straws and Request campaign had focused on doing was restaurant outreaches. Through visiting over 100 restaurants, the support Oceanside's businesses showed in being more environmentally conscious was overwhelming. Almost every restaurant I had visited at the time had shown interest in Straws and Request. Whether they had already adopted the program or had asked to receive more information on the topic, the support was there. I was shocked to see how willing restaurants were to hear me out and switch over to, again, more environmentally conscious alternatives. Through all this work that my colleagues and I had done, it had become obviously apparent that the people of Oceanside are willing and ready to make more environmentally conscious changes in order to help support our environment. While the passing of AB 1884 was a great feat, we can't just stop there. Styrofoams and other types of plastics continue to plague our environment. It's up to us to keep pushing further for more pro-environmental initiatives and set an example for neighboring cities to follow. With that information, I hope you will vote on the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance no later than June 2021. I hope the Council will continue to listen to its citizens and help create a more environmentally conscious Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashmeen. I just wanted to point her out because she is one of our super-youth who went out to, I think it was over 150 restaurants with the message of not automatically giving out straws. And I have to say, our community responded so well to her and to her classmates, and she's still doing this. And I just want to just say thank you so much, Ashmeen, and to all the youth who have been really helpful, a true partner with the City of Oceanside in getting the message out. Thank you.
Mr. Vinales, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, council members and Mayor Sanchez. My name is Jose Arturo Venegas, and I'm a current senior at El Camino High School. As president of ECEC, I'm speaking on behalf of the El Camino Environmental Club in support of the 2020 Zero Waste Plan and Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance. I and other passionate students began this club in the October of 2020 and accumulated close to 700 pounds of properly disposed trash and recyclables in just eight cleanups all throughout the city of Oceanside. We are the leaders, we are the leading example of the next generation of world leaders who are already making efforts to help implement change to reduce and from the real dangers of environmental degradation. For each cleanup, we collect waste audit data where items found, percentages of recyclables, trash hotspots, and weight totals are recorded. For each of our downtown Oceanside cleanups, we've seen an average collection of 98 pounds of trash, with a consistent 40% to 50% of those items being recyclable material that's been littered and forgotten. As you walk the streets downtown, this 98 pounds of trash may seem like an imaginary number, but concealed within bushes, planters, ignored alleyways, and storm drains, you'll find the accumulation of food wrappers, plastic bags, food waste, packaging material, and more. Our club has seen firsthand the obstruction this poses to the productivity of smaller-scale ecosystems in and around Oceanside. Regular worker bee hotspots are halted the next week by napkins and plastic bags that fly throughout the streets onto the once-blooming flowers. Plastic utensils, styrofoam cups, and harmful scrap food concentration has created toxic habitats for insects that are meant to decompose natural organic material to provide nutrients back to our environment. And just this last week, we found a deceased bird stuck within a plastic bag right off a civic center, which we can only assume had suffocated in while picking through the leftover food nearby. This is not an issue that can be consistently resolved through our, through our or other community member cleanups. We have taken two or one-week breaks from these cleaning sites and still find a continued accumulation of harmful man-made materials. This is an issue that must be addressed at the source. My call to action to you, our representatives, is for the implementation of a revised Zero Waste Plan, as well as another vote on the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance to shift away from harmful practices affecting our beautiful Oceanside community. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time.
Thank you, Jose. And you are the leaders. That was not a mistake. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Karina Gonzalez, to be followed by Selassie Illosa, to be followed by Diane Nygaard. Ms. Gonzalez, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Karina Gonzalez, and I'm with Hammond Climate Solutions. Today, I urge you to adopt the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance. The statistics are alarming. By 2050, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish. It is very clear that plastic pollution is an issue for many reasons. We've heard about the effects plastics can have on humans upon consumption, plastics' role in accelerating the climate crisis, and more. In 2019, the production and incineration of plastic produced more than 850 million metric tons of greenhouse gases, equal to the emissions of 189,500 megawatt coal power plants. We are in a climate crisis, and we need to act like it. Today, I urge you to be progressive in your response and adopt this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next public comment is from Selassie Illosa, to be followed by Diane Nygaard, to be followed by Sheila Ott.
Good afternoon, council members. Hello, my name is Selassie Illosa, and I'm here to talk about the zero-waste management. About four years ago, me and a couple of my other classmates had come to talk about how we can improve on this matter at a council meeting that I here am talking at right now. Currently, fast forward, my freshman year, I see no change in any which way. I believe that we can make a better change. As once as I was in the fifth grade, we had made amazing points within our presentation that not only does the waste hurt us as humans, but it also hurts us as an environment and a community. One way that our community can help us get better and cleaner is that we come together and work for the better and the future of the City of Oceanside. Me as only one person cannot make a drastic change, but us as a community can make a huge difference. I hope to see a change in the next four years instead of me asking for more help once again at another council meeting. I want the best for Oceanside, and the Zero Waste Management Plan can help us with just that. In many other ways, such as small changes, such as recycling and using reusable items, such as bags and water bottles and more, as well as just having community and picking up after ourselves from littering. As me and my classmates once asked four years ago, I will yet ask the same question to conclude my speech. And I ask, will you help us keep our ocean clean?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Diane Nygaard, to be followed by Sheila Ott, to be followed by Janice Jones.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. Our Oceanside Zero Waste Program has been something we've all been proud of for many years. Many of the programs within that have been leaders in, not just in our region, but throughout the state. Reducing the production of waste doesn't just comply with the law, it saved us money, but it also reduces our energy use in greenhouse gases. As Joe said earlier, we'll soon have more plastic in the ocean than fish. So clearly, we need to do even better than what we have been doing. So we certainly support this and would urge you to approve it today and expedite the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Sheila Ott, and I apologize for mispronouncing your first name, to be followed by Janice Jones, to be followed by Mary Wallace.
Hi, thank you. No worries, you're not the first one. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Sheila Ott, and I'm with Hammond Climate Solutions. When I was an undergraduate student at San Diego State University, I attended a presentation on the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. And what I learned and saw about plastic pollution shook me to my core so much that I changed my major and graduated with my bachelor's degree in sustainability. And just a few facts, others have mentioned really hard-hitting facts as well. Roughly 2/3 of all plastic ever produced remains in the environment today, either as pollution in oceans and other landscapes, as microparticles in the air, soil, and rain, or as microparticles in humans and animals. Many of the chemicals used in the plastics' manufacturing process are toxic, and workers who make them and live near those factories are at greater risk. When plastic inevitably enters the ocean, it photodegrades into microplastics, which then end up in systems of animals, birds, and marine life, and contribute to the destruction of fragile ecosystems that we're seeing and that we must take responsibility for. So I really appreciate the effort to help reduce single-use plastics by the City of Oceanside. And today, I urge you to implement the Zero Waste Plan update and adopt the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance while ensuring that there are, there is a pathway for accountability to meet those zero-waste targets. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Janice Jones, to be followed by Mary Wallace.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez and council members. I want to start by thanking the Oceanside City staff who've worked so hard to put the Zero Waste Plan together, including the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance. Our city is a leader in reducing both organic and inorganic waste. Many others today have already elaborated on the impacts of plastic pollution, and I'm going to focus on providing some background information about all the outreach that we've done throughout the city. The first time I participated in a city council meeting was in March of 2017, when I was working with a group of fifth graders at Del Rio Elementary School. They had done a multidisciplinary unit on marine debris, and they wrote amazing argument essays and created public service announcements that I felt needed a wider audience. So they had the opportunity to present for the City Council. Some of you probably remember that. They included facts about the impacts of plastic pollution, and they offered simple solutions such as choosing reusable straws and utensils. A couple of the students who were involved in that project are here today, four years later, as you heard from Selassia, to continue advocating for debris-free beaches and neighborhoods. Then in June of 2018, students ranging from fifth grade to 12th grade spoke during public comments to request that the Council enact a straws-on-request ordinance, and Ashmeen was one of those students. Over the summer, we visited dozens of restaurants, and as she said, the overwhelming majority were in favor of making the on-request change. We returned to the Council in August of that year to share the data, and once again, we asked the Council to enact an ordinance. And Ashmeen and several other students were such dedicated volunteers. They really helped raise awareness throughout the community. So then our goal expanded, and in 2019, we began volunteering with Green Oceanside's Be Disposable Free Campaign. We went on to collect hundreds of comment cards in support of policy actions to reduce single-use plastics in our community. So with all that said, the time is right to move forward. I believe that the phased approach with the extended timeline included in the draft ordinance will provide the framework necessary for a smooth transition, and it will allow us to begin reducing the amount of litter in our neighborhoods, on our roadways, and along our beautiful coastline, all that litter that students like Arturo are cleaning up on our behalf. So please adopt the Zero Waste Plan in its entirety to ensure that we meet both our organic and inorganic waste reduction and climate action goals. And I urge you to approve the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance by June, by summer of 2021. And you have my heartfelt conviction that I will continue to volunteer, I'll continue to help organize students, to educate the community, to support businesses, and will continue to work with the Green Oceanside team to ensure a successful rollout of both programs. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Janice.
Our last speaker is Mary Wallace. Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Maria Wallace, and I am a current member of the Escondido Community Advisory Group for Climate Action Plan. We want to support the City of Oceanside in adopting a Zero Waste Plan and a Marine Debris Ordinance. I support this because we live on a planet that has finite resources, but we're acting as we live in one that has infinite resources. According to ECO Source Reduction Video, Earth Overshoot Day was the day when consumption exceeds its resources. That was in July 29, 2019, the earliest date ever been. Also, 4.9 pounds of trash per day is what an average person in the U.S. generates, which is equal to 255 million tons of trash per year. In addition, according to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, there are between 20 million and 1.8 billion pieces of plastic along between 20 million and 1.8 billion pieces of plastic along our coastline, and marine debris can be found even in the deepest part of our ocean. Councilmember and Mayor, tell me, do you think this is sustainable? I urge you to pass the zero-waste plan and the marine debris ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for the presentation, staff, and I really appreciate all the feedback from the public on this. I just have a few questions with respect to implementation. Are we following, I hear we're following lockstep with the state's requirements on reduction as well as timelines? Are we going above and beyond on those timelines, and are we going above and beyond on recommendations locally from what the state has set?
Councilmember Rodriguez, we are not going above and beyond those timelines. Actually, SB 1383, we will be behind the curve. We will, we will end up probably in a notice of violation process. This action plan will help reinforce our commitment towards minimal compliance by 2024, but we are not going above and beyond. We're just trying to meet minimal compliance.
Very good. What was, you know, with respect to the 2024 goals, there is a reference here to the potential of hiring, needing to hire additional staff, depending on the project, you know, the program implementations, et cetera. Code enforcement was listed, the city attorney's office was listed. I would like to just bring up and plant the seed, this is more of a statement than a question, and this is more directed to you, Deanna. You issued an in-house memo on the consideration of how to oversee and manage our housing and code enforcement, and it's been kind of on the discussion since I've been elected to look at moving code enforcement, in my opinion, in the most appropriate department, which would be under planning. They, they work kind of hand-in-hand from a planning perspective, a pro-business perspective. A lot of the dynamics you've been introducing with the programs on educating businesses is more of an advocacy, sorry, it didn't come out, approach, an educational approach. And I kind of see, as we move toward that, which you supported, you just didn't see that we had the funding to hire additional staff. Well, if, as a part of implementing these requirements, we're kind of required to add additional staff, and so I would really like to see us move in a direction of kind of a kill-two-birds-with-one-stone in moving the code enforcement under planning as a part of, of all of this, which is going to be very expensive. Next question is, what was some of the feedback you were hearing from the businesses? Because it seems like they're going to be the ones that are the most affected by this.
Councilmember Rodriguez, with the commercial food scrap rollout over this past year, I've been working very closely with the business community. Fortunately, I give a lot of pride in what we've done in partnership with our hauler. We've set our systems to incentivize these programs. I've never been put in the position to enforce it, but I think that's really the last thing we should ever consider. So we've developed rate structures that I hope we can continue to support moving forward in new agreements that incentivize recycling and organic. So with the rollout of mandatory food scraps services to 1,000 businesses, we've actually, through technical support and kind of wraparound service with our business community, we've been able to help over 70% of our businesses save money on their disposal costs. So when I work with a business, I don't come in as a regulator, I come in to say, okay, how can I help you? How can you help me meet these guidelines? And how can we find a middle ground? And if you need more time, then let's give that to you, and let's make that possible. So the feedback for the zero-waste plan has been positive because I've, we've worked, my team and our city has worked very closely with the business community. I probably meet with the Chamber of Main Street almost on a weekly basis, so they're fully informed, you know, but I do understand their frustration, increasing regulation and really, you know, on their backs, so. But it's been supportive how we've approached these services and programs over the past 10 years, and this plan in particular, we received positive support.
Got it. I received some feedback from the farming community in expectations that have been placed on them that they feel is a little out of place, and so is there gray areas that, you know, businesses, like a farmer, you know, is there something, some relief we can bring those, those gray areas as a city, but still look to be in compliance with what the state, the unreal, in my opinion, unrealistic expectations of the state by certain timeframes?
Councilmember Rodriguez, the timing of that question is actually really funny, because that conversation came up this morning. So with the rollout of our food scraps program, we're with, we have a couple hundred businesses we haven't rolled out services to. And that's because either, you know, they, they've wanted a delay, or they've been resistant, or they're kind of some of our smaller generators. In that group, we have some agricultural customers, and we had the very question this morning on, you know, how do we put a food scraps card on a farmer that's composting? You know, do we have to do that? And so right now, I'm just not approaching that, and that's actually a question I'm coming back to the state with, with SB 1383. Because right now, there's a little bit of flexibility in the gray area, so to speak. But SB 1383, as I read it, and unfortunately, through that process of all those public comments and working with the state, I'm not seeing room for assumptions, but we are pushing for it. And potentially, it's going to be some sort of argument that they are doing onsite composting. It would require monitoring, but we hope to kind of work that angle as well for that agricultural aspect, because that question.
Perfect, yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you for, for being, for being aware of that. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilmember Weiss, Mr. Mullen, would you like, is there something you wanted to add?
Just in response to your first question, my office is not seeking to add any staff as part of the implementation of this zero-waste plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I was just going to ask that question because if you look at page two of the zero-waste plan, we're adding an environmental specialist, environmental officer, code enforcement officer, a financial analyst, and the city attorney, that's five, which is 1.2 above the 3.8. But I guess my question is, what is the extra $815,000 going towards?
So currently, the $750,000 we received for the SB 1383 fee, much of that has gone towards third-party consultants to actually do a lot of the implementation. They helped us develop the contract amendment, they've assisted throughout the implementation of the food scraps rollout. So much of our as-needed solid waste consulting services are within that, in addition to education and outreach with food generators, technical assistance with food generators, and food recovery.
My son will do it for half a million. On page six of the plan, under the organics program, is, and actually before that as well, is the OKC and the efforts they're doing, does it meet the 1383 edible food recovery requirements?
It helps us meet those requirements. So one of the components of the food recovery requirements for SB 1383 is jurisdictions are responsible to provide capacity for food recovery. So that facility offers capacity, excess coolers, value-added processing. So it does help us meet it, but we will be required to do more.
Okay. So if, if you look at page eight of the plan, the last sentence before figure five, can you explain what that means and what efforts we're doing, working with our nearby agencies to come up with a regional solution?
Isn't Vista doing an anaerobic facility, or has completed it?
Councilmember Weiss, Mayor Sanchez, there is a lack of capacity overall in San Diego and across Southern California in particular. In order to meet requirements, we're going to need to increase the capacity across the board and work with each other to kind of support facilitation and implementation. So in simplest form, yes, we are working with other agencies, it's important, we know what each other is doing. And opportunities, food recovery is actually a simple example. North County Food Recovery Resources, we work very closely with them across North County, and in order to comply, we're going to need to work with food recovery agencies within and outside of our borders. So collaboration is going to be key, as well as individual implementation by jurisdictions.
So with the organics, the RFP that's issued, what is in the RFP in regards to where the food program is going to go with its product?
The current RFP is for the collection of solid waste, recyclables, and organic. It is also for the processing of those three streams. So depending upon the proposals, the organics and recyclables could be processed within a facility within our borders. It could potentially be processed in a facility with outside of our borders. It depends on the proposals and the relationships between processors and haulers within North County. So there's a dozen different scenarios. Our study, kind of, our 2018 study goes over some of those scenarios, so I don't have the answer yet for you. We will have it at the conclusion of this RFP process. Proposals are due on March 26 this month.
So if we, if one of those proposals proposes a new facility within the city, there is no way that new facility will be up and running by January of 2022?
Councilmember Weiss, planning for, as you know, being an engineer, planning for and constructing those types of facilities, it takes years, so it's likely that something can't be constructed in that timeline, and we would have to participate in existing facilities, and maybe there's an opportunity to do that in the future, though.
We're really not considering manure going into the food scraps and green waste, are you? Even though that's in your plan?
Could you, could you repeat that? I didn't hear it.
Part of your plan includes manure as being a organic product that would be commingled with food scraps and green waste and wood waste?
That's regulation-driven. Manure is within the definition of SB 1383, it would be a required material that we would have to facilitate processing and collection for.
Do you have, so in, on, in the zero-waste plan, it has the value of the next franchise agreement estimated to be over 400 million. Do you know what the current value of the current agreement is?
Do you know where you found that in there?
Yeah, page 23.
Although it doesn't mention what the current value is, if that's something we need to circle back with you on, we can. But I don't have that for you today.
Well, I'm presuming, since they're looking at 10 years, that it's 40 million a year, since we're paying about 22, so it's about 220 million, but yeah, please let me know. And then also, as a cost-saving measure, on page 25, it talks about transitioning the utility billing to the hauler itself, so does that mean we would completely eliminate the city's utility billing program?
Councilmember Weiss, it's an option that proposers can propose on to take on the billing or leave in the city services as it is currently.
Okay. And then, as I wrap this up, on page 22 in the Waste Characterization Study. So the third column, the commercial, I believe we've already addressed most of it, obviously not all of it.
Councilmember Weiss, you are correct. We have addressed the majority of it. However, SB 1383 is going to require that we provide these services to multifamily complexes, and we have not done that yet.
So if you look at the bottom categories other than organics, and actually even some of the organics, wouldn't a comprehensive material recovery facility be more cost-effective than what we're going through? Or is, at least be looked at as an option? Because I didn't see that anywhere in the zero-waste plan of that even being a consideration? Because then all of the non-organics would easily be able to be separated. So is that an option that should, we should look at to be considered?
Councilmember Weiss, just to make sure I understand your question, the type of facility, are you recommending like a commingled system, so everything kind of goes in one bin and gets processed, a material recovery facility?
Yes.
Potentially like a dirty merf or something like that?
Yes.
That is something to be considered. In the industry, it is seen as a significant challenge. SB 1383 has actually set a really high bar that no facilities in the state have fully figured out to comply with yet.
Okay. And then on, on the zero-waste plan, adopting the zero-waste plan does not put us into compliance with 1383, because there's no ordinance here to do that.
Correct. So that would be some of the actions that would need to be taken over the next two years is to get those ordinances in front of council for adoption.
Well, don't we need to have at least one of them done this current year to be in place prior to January?
I think that there are several ordinances that will be coming over a series of meetings, and you may be right that there's one that's due very soon.
So does adopting the zero-waste plan today put us into compliance? Or it's just a document that we have, that we would have to still do other things to be put in compliance?
Let me answer that, and maybe Colleen can add to it. It provides a framework that we can follow to get us into compliance, and it's something that staff really references as we go through our budgeting process to ensure that we're on track to meet those goals. Certainly, it's going to take some, some effort, though, to implement it.
So it's just a framework? It doesn't bind the council or future councils to any specific action, since we haven't adopted the ordinance yet?
Correct. In terms of the ordinances, those would come under separate action and then would be binding, but right now, they are not in front of you, are not adopted, so they're not binding. And that would include the marine debris ordinance, which would come under separate action.
And I just have just a couple of questions and comments about the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance. As was mentioned by one of the speakers, they, when they do their collections, they get about 50% of its recyclable materials anyway. To me, it's a marine debris substitution ordinance. We're just going to substitute single-use plastics, take them out from one business sector and substitute it with recyclable products, unless there are behavior changes made at the personal level to not throw this stuff in the ocean trash or anywhere else. But I guess my concern being, we are looking to eliminate single-use plastics and polystyrene from one specific business sector, which is the food service sector. And yet, I can still go to Smart &amp; Final and buy my 100 Styrofoam plates and my 100 plastic knives, spoons and forks, go to Buccaneer Beach for my eight-year-old's birthday party, and throw everything in the trash. So to me, as much as I like to see us take a step forward, to me, the bigger issue is the single-use plastics need to be banned, like the state did with single-use plastic bags. And that's what I think it needs to start with, there needs to be pressure to go look at those things and ban them wholesale, not just from one business sector that's going to be impacted, when the fact is you can go to any other retailer and go buy the stuff. It makes no sense to me to ban it from that one perspective. So with that, if you have a response to that, I'd be happy to hear it.
Councilmember Weiss, that is an excellent point that was actually raised through the development process. You are correct, the current draft only addresses single-use polystyrene and utensils generated by food service providers. It does not prohibit the, you know, the foam egg carton or the foam plates you mentioned. Part of the challenges with that, when cities have implemented ordinances, is it's difficult when you're passing, crossing jurisdictions. A lot of those large-scale corporate companies, they sell those products at all their stores, and it's been pretty challenging to prohibit that. So I think that's going to be left at a more state level than on an individual jurisdiction level.
I agree, and I think we need to put pressure on our state legislators to look at, just like they did with the single-use plastic bags, ban it. But anyway, that's all the questions I have currently. Thank you.
Did you have a motion?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I haven't thought about it.
And you are out of time, just, Deputy Mayor Keim.
Yeah, Councilmember Weiss covered a lot of my same concerns, but I'll start with the marine ordinance. Again, that's a, you know, this year, I think our restaurants have ordinance. Again, that's a, you know, this year, I think our restaurants have just been penalized, over-penalized because they're the, they're the lowest hanging fruit. It's the easiest. We see someone sitting outside eating, so we'll give them a ticket. They're handing out things. So, and you know, a lot of these bigger, you know, nobody's ever counted how many people were in Costco. And if that was over the, you know, the popular or the occupancy limits that were set. And so, and this has been a challenging year for our restaurants where they have just been getting hammered every which way. And this, I think, is another one. And I really, I've gone across the world surfing and you go to these remote beaches and see plastic piled up. So this is something I'm passionate about. But again, I see the selective enforcement because restaurants are the easiest, so let's just put the burden only on them. When you can go to Costco and buy 47,000 plastic forks and they go out. So I agree, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I'm okay moving forward with this today. But again, this is, this is just, restaurants are the easiest to enforce, so we'll just do that and leave it there. I don't think that's right. And again, when we go to 1383, and this is what happens with the state in all sectors, whether it's law enforcement, emergency medicine, it just, it seems like the reporting and the added bureaucracy take up all of staff time and our resources. And it is just extremely burdensome. And I think we need to be very vocal. And while these are great goals, I think the way the state makes us record and implement them is just, it's unfeasible. And I think we really need to be out and advocating for, you know, more streamlined process that actually, you know, encourages us to be successful instead of just penalizing us. Thank you.
So that was a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
No, I didn't make a motion yet, Mayor Sanchez. Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make that motion. And that is at the page five, it's a little more outlined. It is adopt the 2020 Zero Waste Plan, which includes the SB 1383 Action Plan. And that's the third option. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And then number two would be direct staff to return to city council in summer 2021 to introduce and adopt the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance with a three-year phased approach timeline for compliance. So at least putting that on the table. And I want to say, this is the next step. We have been leading, not only in the county, but in the state. And for us, and for me and for us, it has been about doing the right thing, but also knowing that the, that these regulations were coming down from the state. And to be able to have the time to really approach this in the most comprehensive way and not rushed, and not rushed because we were looking at fines and penalties. So at this time, I think someone, I think, I believe, Councilmember Weiss, raised the question about the regionality of this, of what we can do to work with others. City of Carlsbad has a transfer station. We have green waste facility. And City of Vista just, just grand opening this month of March 2021, now has an organics anaerobic digestion, digestion facility. If you can imagine the three cities or, you know, whatever, North County, working together and not having to see these trucks going to Riverside or Orange County or wherever else they go, and being able to reduce, you know, these impacts, which is, which is a final goal, to reduce the greenhouse gas, reduce the waste, reduce landfills, reduce the debris that goes into our oceans. So if we were able to do that, I see that we can. I'm an optimist. And I have to say that what staff and this city did, and the schools and the youth, and the grocery store associations and the businesses, when we were looking at legislation coming down about the single-use plastic bag, we were all able to work together. The grocery association, I believe, was it Albertson's, that really took the front, you know, line on this and, and really worked with us. So here is another situation. We're going from single-use plastic bags now to plastic utensils and Styrofoam. And I never can say the right word on the Styrofoam bit. But what really got us there was the education. Councilmember Weiss mentioned that. Well, how are we going to get that if we don't change the way people do things? And you know what? We have been known to, us as a generation, maybe it was the past generation, we didn't have oil products a few decades ago, right? We know that we can change for the best and for the better. And, and I certainly don't want to be one of the first cities to get these penalties. What staff is bringing before us is to be in compliance by the deadline. So this framework, I believe, will get us to the next step, which is the marine, the, the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance, obviously, right? But geez, we're going to have to do what you did before. And that is go out and have these meetings at the community level. I was there for a couple of them. People were very, very supportive. And I believe that this city will do the same because we do want cleaner, a cleaner ocean. We had comments by the youth and, you know, it's their future that we're trying to protect. And I have to say, we're doing a lousy job, but we can do better. And so I do support what staff is, is recommending. We're going to have to figure out and continue to strategize how to do it best, the most efficient and cost-effective. So I have Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, I just had a question regarding the option three, three-year phased approach with the COVID-related exemptions for the restaurants. Maybe you could explain more of the COVID-related exemptions and how that's going to help.
Yes, Councilmember Jensen, thank you for the question. So we've written the language in the ordinance to allow flexibility. So if a business says, I can't do this, and really, it's, it's not that direct about COVID. It's just, I can't do it. I can't afford to do it. I've had economic hardship. We're not going to enforce it upon them. We're going to work with them to find alternatives, to find a way to do it. But we will provide a delay, if not an exemption. And the language is fairly vague that it's, it's up to the city administrator of the ordinance. With the ordinance, when we, when the state passed, so the City of Oceanside passed a bag ban back in 2015. It was a couple of months before the state actually passed the state bag ban. And so the state bag ban took precedence. And so when the state bag ban came into effect, we thought that everyone was going to fight it and not do it. What we found is that the majority of grocery stores complied. You know, all of a sudden, there was a charge and the state bag ban was in effect. There was no enforcement. We didn't take any enforcement actions. And if the store said, I don't want to do it, we just kind of went with that and focused on education and technical support. So this ordinance is drafted in such a way to provide that flexibility if businesses are challenged with implementing the ordinance.
Councilmember Weiss?
I would ask if we could do two separate motions on the two items.
Okay.
Just because I will be supporting the zero waste plan because it is just that, a plan and a framework. But I'm going to reserve judgment until I actually see the plan for what we do with the food scraps, where it's going to go, what's going to happen to it, what the costs are going to be and what the rate impacts are going to be, which apparently will be coming later. So I will be supporting it.
If I can ask staff, with respect to item number two of the recommendations in your staff report, is that basically to, to come back to us this summer with the plan that Councilmember Weiss is talking about?
Item.
Does that, does that incorporate?
Mine's regard to item one, Zero Waste Plan. I think item two is the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance.
Yeah, the marine, the intent of the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance was to come back in the summer.
Right.
For the public hearing related to that.
Is that what you're referring to, splitting these two items?
Yes.
Number one and number two? Okay. And Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just, I want some clarification on that. Peter, can you clarify what your, item one, I'm looking at the workshop items. That's what I'm thinking you're talking about. But you're talking about within the zero waste plan.
No, I'm talking about workshop item number one.
Got it.
The zero waste plan.
On page five of the staff, staff report.
Got it, got it, got it. And so you're, okay, got it. I see what you're saying. So you're good with number one, moving forward on that plan? Because it's just a plan. We're not, we're not.
Right.
Moving. And then, and then item two.
I mean, if we do a separate vote on two, my issue with item two is I'm not going to support item two to go after target one specific business industry when it should be more across the whole. We should, we should be going after plastics, not necessarily.
100% agree. Okay. So I, I agree with supporting item one as well, just to put that out there. I'm not, not there on item two yet.
Okay, okay. Why don't we take this separately? There has been a request. So I make a motion that we adopt item number one with respect to page five of staff's recommendation, staff report. And that is to adopt the 2020 Zero Waste Plan, which includes the SB 1383 Action Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Can we go to a vote now? Or Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak before we do that?
No, I'll.
Okay, let's go to a vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, now we have item number two. And if staff, do you understand what, what the concerns are of Councilmember Weiss? And can we frame a motion that, because we need to hear back from you, right, by this summer, in order to be able to be in compliance with, with the requirements and not to end up?
So the marine debris.
2023 December 31st, being subject to the penalties.
The Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance is, is above and beyond what's required by law, but it is community-driven. We can come back in the summer with the ordinance. We could also, if you want to provide direction to staff to advocate for a reduction in those other materials at the state level, we could, we could start that effort as well as part of this as a companion effort.
So the concern, Councilmember Weiss, your concern is that it's, it's addressing only one, I was going to say industry, one area and not more. Is that what your concern is?
Correct. Just like the bags. If we ban the bags, you ban them. If we're going to ban, ban polystyrene and single-use cutlery, you know, then we should ban them, not just necessarily attack those being provided by the restaurant industry.
Okay. So does staff understand that? Because I actually believe that, I actually believe that we were going to be doing it all as well. So because I'm imagining the same outreach that staff did for the single-use plastic bag, which is to go out to the community and talk about these items of plastics, the Styrofoam. I also envisioned that we would be going to grocery stores and Costco and suggesting that, you know, they have less of those items and have, you know, and start with the idea of reduce, you know, with eliminating them for purchase, and then having more items that would, would not be plastics, that would not be Styrofoam, that would be mostly paper. Do you have, do you have an, do you have something that you could suggest so that we can come back and review a marine debris reduction plan?
Mayor Sanchez, original drafts of this ordinance that we've been working on for the past year actually was more comprehensive. It did include the polystyrene egg cartons and igloo or the, the coolers, the buoys. It was more comprehensive. As we developed the ordinance and we evaluated the impacts and also evaluated the staffing costs, implementation costs, and also the viability of passage and acceptability, we narrowed that ordinance scope down. Another reason for that is even though polystyrene across the board is a pollutant and is a major source of litter, including from those, those polystyrene plates and all those added materials, the primary source of marine litter from studies across the state and coastal studies has been actually from food service ware, single-use food service ware made out of polystyrene. So that's the largest source of litter when you're looking at it from that perspective. So that was also one of the other reasons why we narrowed the ordinance down, to have the greatest impact with the minimal impact to how to implement it. So the other options are there. We can bring that back into a draft ordinance. That was something we did consider earlier on.
If, if I can see clarification really quickly, what I thought I understood, Councilmember Weiss, to advocate was a ban at the statewide level for these types of products, not a local ordinance that's broader.
Correct.
But, but to lobby on behalf of, you know, with our state legislatures to seek a broader ban statewide. Did I misunderstand that?
That's correct. Because if I can go to Smart, if I, if we ban Oceanside and I can't buy Smart and Final, well, I'm just going to go to Vista and buy it at Costco.
Right.
So if, if polystyrene is the problem, then we need to ban it.
Yeah. And I think there certainly could be interstate commerce issues if the city were to have a single ban on a particular type of product that you could go buy in Carlsbad or Vista or some other city. So we certainly would have to look at that. But I was just responding to the initial statement that Councilmember Weiss made. I thought what I heard was for us to seek and lobby statewide legislatures to ban these products. But.
I think I also heard a level of unfairness to be looking to a certain industry versus a more broader.
Right.
For the community.
My light is on.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate the idea of this local ordinance, but as staff found, when you try to blanket a jurisdiction, the complexities, the enforcement, the, just the, it gets out of control. And this is a state-level issue. And so I would be in support of advocating for the state legislator to, to weigh in and get involved on something we can all get on the same page with. Because moving forward on an ordinance just with the City of Oceanside, as much as it would feel good, it's not going to accomplish anything other than the feel-good. And so I will not be supporting this item. This is a state-level item. And, and I don't think it's appropriate to move forward on a, on a local ordinance at this time.
I have a question. This, this, we've been talking about enforcement and enforceable act. What about more of an education? Because I actually believe that we need to do this, but it sounds like there is not support on the dais for this. But what about some kind of outreach and education to food, retail, restaurants, whatever, so that we start getting voluntary compliance that would not be, you know, seeking penalties, but seeking the, you know, the reasons why this would be beneficial to our city. And I do hear from the, from the youth that they want to be able to go out and do this and, and speak, reach out to the restaurants. We did this for the, for the straws. We did not actually have a straw ordinance. So what I'm speaking to is to something that we have started in Oceanside and that there has been compliance without, you know, having anybody actually get any kind of a penalty or an enforcement. Would, would we, would, would, would the council be willing to support that, an education? And, okay. Deputy Mayor Keim?
That's what I was going to ask for, Mayor Sanchez. I think that at this point, I'm just not supportive of us penalizing restaurants at the hardest time they've ever had. Again, it's not taking away the importance of plastic. And I think if we work hard, I would imagine we'll get 90, 95% compliance, especially from what I've heard. I just, I think we need to be careful about focusing on one small group of businesses while the ones with the biggest impact are left completely alone. I just don't think that's good public policy.
So if we were to say, direct staff to return to city council in summer 2021 to introduce and adopt the Marine Debris Reduction Resolution with a three-year phased approach timeline for achieving its goals, that's, that would be voluntary. Is that acceptable? Okay. So I'll go ahead and make that motion. I only changed a couple of, of words there. And I do believe that I'm hearing support for a voluntary program. Deputy Mayor Keim, did you say, want to say anything else?
No, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez?
So we're just, we're doing a resolution just in support of, you know, our commitment to advocating and. to advocating and lobbying and educating our, our community on the importance of, you know, and impacts of those single-use plastic items. But I, I think it's just, it's not just for restaurants. I think it's for everybody. If, you know, my household, my kids, and what we buy at the store, that needs to be educated just as well as what the business is.
Yeah, I'm hearing that. I'm hearing that this is for, you know, educating all of us. With the single-use plastic bag ban and, and also the zero waste, the schools got on board. I remember Palmquist just doing a complete zero waste, and it went, they basically exported that plan to all the schools. So now every single, and, and Oceanside Unified School District was the first one in the nation that did that. So.
Yeah, I'll support a resolution with an educational approach. But again, I would like to see that, both to our residents to get involved and also our businesses. So it's, everybody's working toward the reduction, not just, you know, not just business, everybody. But I would support.
Does staff understand that? And is that a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to understand the motion, Mayor, if I could interject. The motion is to direct staff to return to the city council in summer 2021 to introduce and adopt the marine debris reduction resolution with a three-year phased approach timeline for compliance. Or is it just strictly for education?
For achieving its goals.
For achieving its goals, not necessarily the three-year phased approach.
Compliance, I don't know. It sounds mandatory. I don't know. I guess it can be voluntary compliance.
Adopt the marine debris reduction resolution with-
We could leave it compliance, voluntary compliance. Yes?
Mayor Sanchez.
That's the part of the motion I'm not really clear on.
I think the consensus of the council is to have a voluntary program. So education, outreach, lobbying to implement a voluntary program. That's what I'm hearing.
But including lobbying state-
Yes.
-to do a mandatory.
And we wouldn't need the word introduce, so it could strike that.
Right.
Perfect.
To adopt. Working, working off the dais here. Appreciate the help. Deputy Mayor Keim?
John Kepper.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. We have item number two, which is use of proceeds from judgment and award of damages to the Water Authority in the amount of $2 million. Help me out here.
It's a big number.
I saw a copy of the check here. Well, you'll, you'll get to it. All right. Report by Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director.
Good afternoon. Once again.
Still smiling.
Here to talk about the judgment and award of damages to the Water Authority, another green theme, talking about Greenbacks this time on this St. Patrick's Day. So as way of background, in 2010, the Water Authority filed one of many suits against the Metropolitan Water District mainly to protest the transportation of water through MWD's pipelines. There was an additional charge that was added in order to transport that water. There were several additional lawsuits that were filed each time Metropolitan brought forward new rates, 2012, 14, 16, and 18, and many of those are still ongoing. In 2015, there was a judgment made in Superior Court that the two lawsuits from 2012 through 2014 rates were illegal for the transportation charges. That decision was appealed by Metropolitan Water District, and that's why the check or the rebate has been delayed in getting to the city. The judgment is a contract damages amount for principal and interest specific to the water stewardship rate from the period 2011 through 2014. The board took two actions. One was after the initial lawsuit was filed in 2010, as well as just recently, to determine that those funds be returned to the member agencies proportional to the payment of the disputed charge. The total rebated amount for those years of the lawsuit was a little over $44 million. Oceanside received $2.351 million. It's the fourth-largest award in the region. We did receive a check last week, I believe, maybe two weeks ago. It has been deposited, so that was very, very exciting to receive. That came in the mail. Very interesting.
They didn't deliver it personally?
No, it came in the mail. We had to search for it, but we did find it, thankfully. As I mentioned, the total rebate, a little over $44 million. Oceanside was distributed $2.351,413.99. And of that, that includes an estimated overpayment of $1.5 million as well as $822,000 of estimated interest earnings. So what do we do with that money? We met with the finance staff and with our IT staff, because there is some pulling of data that might be needed for some of these options. We came up with a lot of them. I only have five today. The first one being providing a rebate to customers, which is based on their usage during the time period in question. We do have water usage data available. It can be pulled by our IT staff. We do know during that time, we had a lot of customers moving in and out of their residences, 131,000 in total. So that's a lot of rebate checks to be written. The cost to locate and rebate each and every customer that used water during that time period would likely be reduced because of just the administrative burden of administering an option like this. Option B that we talked about was establishing a rate stabilization fund in the amount of the overpayment and use the proceeds to offset the rates that are upcoming in January of 2022. A second part of that would establish a customer assistance program in the amount of the interest earnings. So applying the overpayment would reduce the internal rate increase for the, this coming January by half a percent. And I did want to mention that there was federal legislation that just was passed where there is a program, or it could be a program for customer utility assistance developed as a part of those proceeds. So there is perhaps some redundancy in there, but we provide it as an option for you. The third option, option C, is to establish a rate stabilization fund in the entire amount and use the proceeds to offset this one year of rate increases. It would reduce the internal rate increase by 1.0%. So any of the increases from Metropolitan and the Water Authority would continue to be passed through to the ratepayers. It wouldn't offset those costs. It provides equitable rate relief to all of the ratepayers. Option D would smooth the application of that entire rebate amount over a five-year period. It does reduce internal rate increases by 0.4% for each of the five years. And as with the earlier option, the Water Authority and Metropolitan increases would continue to be passed through. This also provides equitable rate relief, however, it is over a longer period of time. Option E is to apply the rebate towards any one-time costs in the operating budget, such as conservation incentives, operational updates for water loss reduction, or to the capital improvement program. It, it basically has the same impact of, of applying the funding towards the future rate increases, such as those in options C and D. We did an informal survey with other water agencies in the region. Those that responded are listed here, the majority of which are intending to offset future rate increases and use them towards rate stabilization. We had one agency that wasn't decided, three that just wanted to use it for one-time costs or CIP-type work. Staff is recommending either of the two options that apply the full proceeds to offset rates either on a one-year or a five-year term. That's option C or option D. I do want to mention that we were briefed earlier this week by the attorney at the Water Authority that there's likely to be a similar rebate for those other years that will be coming at some point in the future. So if that helps guide your decision in determining which way to go, I just wanted to offer that up. So I'll take any questions that you may have related to this.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
We do have one public comment from Diane Nygaard.
Let's hear from Ms. Nygaard.
Ms. Nygaard, whenever you're ready.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm going to support option E. I think this is a one-time opportunity to invest funds in a strategic way that really affects our long-term costs and could have greater benefit long-term. A 0.5% reduction in rates, I, I think most people wouldn't feel much difference, but if we look strategically long-term. I'm going to share with you a copy of some recent studies that have showed how investments in our natural lands really can reduce our costs, particularly when we're looking at water impacts, things like flood control and water quality. Addressing those issues is very costly. We've already invested in natural water quality solutions in our city. I think of the land acquisition along Loma Alta Creek that helped address the impairments in that watershed, improved by improving creek buffers. We've got watershed management plans that significant resources were spent on for both Loma Alta and Buena Vista. And investing in land acquisitions and restoration of those natural lands can really impact us long-term. So I would urge you to adopt option E and look at strategically how we can invest those funds in a way that we get multiple benefits long-term and reduce our long-term costs that will benefit ratepayers forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Back to the city council. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Well, this is, this is good news, to get a check in the mail. What are the limitations of, I mean, I see what other jurisdictions are doing. What are the limitations of where these funds can be, can be spent for public benefit? Does it have to be spent within the, obviously, the, I'm assuming the utilities enterprise account, or can it, you know, can we build a football field with it? You know, like, what is the, what are the limitations here?
Only if it's used for some kind of water project, right?
I'll defer to our city attorney.
It's enterprise fund money, so it has to be kept within the enterprise. But within that, you have pretty broad discretion.
Okay. Yeah, I, I kind of, I mean, I think reducing rates is, I mean, how often can we do that? That's great, but I think the benefit would not really be felt, you know, to the ones who need it most. And so I would just encourage, whatever we do move on, that we can create the most impact, you know, for our city and our residents, whatever that, that looks like. So I don't know. This is, this is a tough one, on where to, where to put those, those funds. I wish we had a lot more public feedback on what they would want to see done with this. Anyway, that's all I have for now.
Ms. Nygaard did mention option E and saw some benefit that we, that our residents would get. Could you speak more to option E?
So we didn't have any specifics related to option E. Let me bring that up there on the screen. It's paying for any one-time costs in the utility that wouldn't otherwise be funded through the budget process. So I don't have any specific project in mind. I don't know if Ms. Nygaard did.
Well, I believe she was talking about conservation incentives. I didn't really write down all the things that she suggested. All right, Councilmember Rodriguez?
I thought I was back. What, some of them were using it for like a, a fund. Is it like if somebody's struggling to pay their utility bill, then you can use it for that? Can you elaborate on that? Because I know we've had a lot of families impacted by COVID, and I, you know, I keep hearing, you know, there's some back due utilities, and so maybe this can be utilized for like some sort of grant program to help people get caught up on their water bill, or, or something like that, where it can really make some, some impacts for, for those that have been, that have been affected.
And that was option B, where a portion of the money could be set aside, the $822,000 could be set aside for development of some sort of customer assistance program. We don't have anything in mind, and we could certainly come back with, with ideas on how to implement that. Or you could, as another option, use the entire rebate for a program like that. I don't know that we have bills in arrears that exceed that $822,000 currently, but it would certainly go towards, you know, many years of program implementation if you applied the full amount.
Can I ask, is that part of, was that part of the COVID relief, Ms. Larson?
So Mayor and Councilmembers, we do have a utility relief program that was funded with CDBG funds. However, that funding source doesn't allow payments to the entity that receives the funds. So my understanding is under that program, we can't give, give funding for water bills because that benefits the City of Oceanside. However, with the $33 million that we should be receiving under the new American Rescue Relief Program, I think staff anticipates allocating funds for exactly that purpose, to allow people to pay their past due water and sewer bills and other utility relief. And so I would encourage to look to that funding source instead of this particular funding source.
Are you done for now?
No, no. So that makes sense. Gosh, what, so if we're going to use that, could we, yeah, I don't have anything else standing. I'm sorry.
We could still think about this, right? Councilmember Weiss?
I'm going to recommend that we go with option B. And if, in fact, we get federal money that would supplement the $800,000, then use it to do long-term rate stabilization. But for us to have the money available for people who are struggling with their utility bills, I think if there's a way of getting them up to current status so that when some of this starts to tailor off, my fear is that a lot of these people who are, can barely pay 1,200 bucks a month rent, are going to get a year to catch up on the past year, and they're going to be paying $2,400 a month. And anything we can do to help them reduce their costs to prevent them from drifting into homelessness, I think is a good thing to do. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve option B. And if we do get the money, then put it into the rate stabilization.
I second that.
Okay, so the motion is for option B, and there's a second. Can I ask a question? Are there fees that could be waived that are like late fees or penalties that could be waived that would not affect the actual costs to the city?
We've actually been waiving fees through, beginning of COVID through November, I believe, and they started again in December. And it was tracking with the stay-at-home order and whether we were not on it or on it. So yes, we have discretion to do that.
Okay, and, and because of COVID, we actually haven't shut anybody off. Is that right?
Correct. Under, the governor has an order where we cannot shut folks off.
Yeah, I, I thought so. Deputy Mayor Keim?
So, and this is maybe for staff. Would it be easier if we waited till we found out the exact rules for the federal money? And then if we have a certain amount, because what if we have a certain amount that's set aside out of that for this, and we, we don't need to do that if we're forced to spend some of that $33 million on a rate stabilization? I mean, would it be helpful just to circle back when we actually have some details about how to spend that money?
Mayor, or Councilmember, Mayor and Councilmembers, the, you know, actually putting it into rate stabilization fund, we're not spending it right now anyway. So that's always an action that council can adjust once we do have more information from the Federal Relief Act. It's not like we're sending a check to anybody today. I do agree. I think utility relief is a top priority, and that was one of staff's top recommendations as we learned more about the Relief Act. It does clearly seem to be something that the city would be eligible to use that, those funds on.
That would be, I'd support option B as well.
Okay. No other speakers? I, it sounds like a, a good recommendation, so let's vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. Do we have any public communications on off-agenda items?
There is no public on off-agenda items.
Okay, so that means that we're adjourning to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the council. That is March 24th, 2021, at 3:30. Thank you. Happy St. Patrick's Day.